Good evening. Welcome to this meeting of the school board. And if you'd like to join us in the pledge of allegiance, please do so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if there's no objection, I would like to add, under Superintendent's report, a nomination for after-school stipended position for string orchestra. No objections. Then we're going to have public comments. And could I just see a show of hands how many people want to talk? One, two, three, four. Okay. We can do that in three minutes, please. And if you would give the name for the recorder loud and clear.
Good evening. My name is Chris Mueller and I live in Durham. My wife and I have been in Durham for 16 years. We have two children, Owen, who's a fifth grader in middle school, and Olivia, a second grader at Moheramit. We are a Moheramit family. I know the board is faced with a difficult decision to find a solution that would equitably ensure consistent enrollment at both elementary schools to maintain safety, educational quality, and resource alignment. One option is to redraw the bus lines, the other is to repurpose the schools. This is a decision that means change for many, and as we all know, change can be difficult for many. Well, we live in a neighborhood including the proposed redrawing of the bus lines. When this became a tangible issue earlier this year, we were initially concerned, but also recognized that more research and discussion needed to take place. So we reserved our judgment until there was further clarity on the merits of both options. We recognize there are pros and cons for both, but today, we remain concerned about the bus line option. Now, it would be easy for us to make an emotional appeal that our daughter has been to every Moheramit event since she was two years old, either as a current student or for her brother's back-to-school nights, concerts, pumpkin strolls, or graduation. It would be easy for us to say that she also feels a strong sense of belonging to Moheramit because the fourth-grade mosaic that now resides next to the Sugar Shack sat in my garage for a month while we all put the finishing touches on it, including Olivia. And that mosaic is the first thing she sees every morning very proudly as that bus makes its way up the driveway. In every sense of the word, we are a Moheramit family. It would be easy for us to say we don't know how she'll adapt to the change of being pulled away from her home, her friends, her teachers, and the institution that she loves, and how it may affect her emotionally and developmentally. I'm confident Massway can provide the same quality of education, but the question is, how will a seven-year-old girl handle it? Some in favor of the bus line redraw say it preserves the integrity of the whole child K through four. But that doesn't apply to our daughter or the 65 other children. But this isn't just about the Muelers or the other 45 families and 65 other children being asked to take one for the team. A decision such as this affects all the families and the children in our district in the future. And as such, this decision must also support a long-term solution, not a quick, easy, and temporary fix that does not address the systemic problem. In fact, enrollment disparity isn't the problem, it's a result. Here's the problem, and according to the New Hampshire Multiple Listing Service, and I'm going to throw some numbers at you, so if you want me to stop and repeat them, I'd be happy to do this. For the past 10-year period, home sales in Durham and Madbury, predominantly Moheramit, have outpaced Lee by more than 2 to 1. In fact, 2.18 to 1, 905 sales to 416. Over the past seven years, Durham and Madbury have outpaced Lee again, more than 2 to 1. In fact, 2.32 to 1, 581 sales to 250. Last five years again, more than 2 to 1, two-year average, more than 2 to 1. And in fact, last year was 2.24 to 1. There's your bubble. So I'm not really a rocket scientist, but I can tell you this. Redrawing the bus lines might help us tomorrow, might help us next year, but it can't solve for the future based on the home sale baseline we now have. More than 2 to 1 in favor predominantly Moheramit neighborhoods. So based on these numbers, the enrollment in Moheramit neighborhoods will continue to outpace those in Massway neighborhoods. That's the problem, and it's not going away. We saw that this year, and any long-term solution really needs to be able to handle this disparity and transform that disparity into equalized enrollment. Redrawing the bus lines is not that solution because it can only react to something that's already happened. So if we can't account for the future of the bus lines, except in those neighborhoods that we've identified, we also can't predict or anticipate what neighborhoods we'll see in influx in the future. So any long-term solution really needs to look at where are those neighborhoods getting the students from, where are they moving to, and the only way to really equalize that is to look at the repurposing of the schools. So if we have today's neighborhoods and those children age out, Candy Farm gets a big pop, we have the same problem over and over again.
I've given you an extra minute.
Okay, all right. So I will move on and just say that repurposing the schools provides a built-in mechanism to handle any of the future demographic shifts in our neighborhoods, as all children, regardless of where they live, will go to the age grade school. It ensures that all future children will not have to change their schools on their own to leave their friends, teachers, and sense of belonging behind. It also ensures consistent predictable enrollment across the board, enabling the board and the administration, staff, and faculty to make sound, informed decisions on all matters using reliable, consistent enrollment data. It frees the board and the administration from having to deal with this yet again, preventing all of us from spending time on matters that can further improve the quality of our children's educational experience. And it's phased in over time, minimizing the impact on students who move out and are not in the grade, not on their own. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we try to keep to three minutes?
I will, yes. Thank you. Hi. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Dr. Christy Beamer. I'm the mother of Jack in the second grade at Moheramit. We live on Frost Drive. Unfortunately, the half of our block that will be redistricted under your plan. I'd also like to apologize because most, like many, many parents that I emailed with today furiously, I'm upset. So I apologize for that. I'd like to start by respectfully clarifying an issue. I've heard it said that the board believed that the general opinion of the public was in favor of redistricting and redrawing the bus lines. I believe that this is a misconception. We were simply completely uninformed that this issue would affect our neighborhood. Apparently, when full-day kindergarten was an issue on the table, every parent of a child that would have been affected was called, and although your plan involves taking 66 children away from all their friends and putting them in an entirely new school environment, none of us parents were contacted. The last I heard of this redistricting plan was over a year ago, and only a few children were affected in the faculty neighborhood, not me. And like everybody else, unless it affects me, I'm not going to come to the evening meeting and get a little angry. So I apologize for that. But it was by pure chance I even discovered that our neighborhood would be completely divided, even down to the block, my block being split in two. So I think you simply haven't heard from the many parents that are very upset about this redistricting plan, those of us directly affected. I do not want to compare the two schools. I only know Moheramit. Before I left for this meeting this evening, one of my students at UNH emailed me to thank me for letting her interview me for her journalism class. She closed with, "Are there any cute shenanigans going on at Moheramit recently, or as you called it, the most adorable button school that ever was?" When I moved here just five years ago, we were thrilled that our whole neighborhood would go to school together, and we loved it at Moheramit. And I call it button school because it's cuter than I ever could have imagined a grammar school could be, and I don't know anything about Massway. So my objection is not based on the quality of Massway compared to Moheramit, although I would like to note that these comparisons are being made in our community, and the K through 2, 3 through 5 plan would fix that problem that this issue has certainly cast some light upon. I understand the board's sensitivity to transitioning of students, but I believe that this is not an appropriate argument here. First, as some other parents on my block have suggested, if it is so detrimental for students to transition, then what exactly is it about our 66 children that the board believes makes them deserving of this detrimental treatment? Second, if all the students move together, I do not believe that transition is difficult. It's the students that make the school. Every year, our child gets a new teacher. Every year, there's a new rule or two. Last year, the pumpkins went home with kids after the pumpkin stroll. This year, we picked them up. So there's always an adaptation to be had every year. But going to school with all the same classmates from year to year is simply and certainly a smoother transition than switching 66 families to a completely new school. I've been trying to keep this from my second grader, but when he overheard me speaking with my husband, he said, "I don't want to leave Moheramit. I don't want to leave all my friends." He didn't say he'd miss the building. There are many more issues to discuss here, not the least of which are the implications that these lines have been drawn based on the socioeconomic profile of the neighborhoods. I'm not saying that that is true. I honestly don't know, but I would be truly horrified to hear it was true. I think this needs to be researched, and we need to see numbers, and we need to know the implications of dividing our schools so that one school has a different socioeconomic level than the other, especially since this sort of comparisons are being made already. If both schools are wonderful--
We are, three minutes.
Thanks, I'm done. If both schools are wonderful, as I believe they are, then let's give all of our students the opportunity to go to both of them together under Superintendent Morse's plan. Thank you.
Good evening. Richard Weaker, Durham, New Hampshire. I'm in favor of the K through 2 plan. There are several things in this community that divide us. We should not make our schools one of them. The K through 2 plan will allow for a number of advantages that will outweigh any short-term negative effects. Some of them are social integration from the start. Students will know students, parents will know parents, teachers will know parents. It will help optimize and add efficiency to our busing routes. It may even add additional availability to run charters and add revenues to the operating costs. It will minimize, the minimization of challenges faced with entering into middle school. Deviations in forecasted student enrollments will not require additional redistricting, ever. Potential consolidation on some staffing requirements may be taken into consideration. It will be easier to maintain districts, student-teacher ratios, our districts, not the states. Our curriculum unification, it'll allow for unification of the curriculum, and a reduction or elimination of educational gaps, especially when we're going from the elementary to the middle school. The consolidation of the PTO efforts and funds to support the students' enrichment activities will be enhanced. There could be improvements in real estate values across the board due to achievement of cost effectiveness. It eliminates problems of uncertainty created by redistricting. For example, extended families will be able to help with childcare due to common bus routings. Younger siblings who are looking forward to their turn and participating in events in their older siblings did at the same school, they will have their expectations met. It's going to bring our community together instead of dividing us further. It increases the ability for the school board to make decisions that are proactive instead of reactive. In closing, we sought and hired a highly qualified superintendent that we don't seem to listen to. It's my understanding that the leadership of our district wants this, and I would love to hear their reasons for their support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Beth Hawley. I live in Durham. I have two children who are currently enrolled at Moheramit. Chris in second grade and Bridgette in kindergarten. We are one of the 44 families who would have to change schools if the bus routes are redefined. In the public discussions at the last school board meeting, I felt like those of us who may have to switch their school with a bus route change were not very well represented. So I wanted to add my family's perspective on a few points. First, as you noted in your presentation, you can find arguments for both options. Because of this, it's natural that people's opinions are influenced by how it will affect them personally. In the face of those opinions and emotions, we appreciate that the board looked to Superintendent Morse's office for recommendations on the best solutions for our children's education and the district as a whole. Less than two years ago, the board unanimously approved hiring Dr. Morse, who is an educator known for creating collaborative environments and visionary solutions for districts. It seems as if Dr. Morse and school administrators prefer the K through 2, 3 through 4 option for the positive academic--
As I think that we've heard tonight. And an analogy that I was talking to my husband about is when you have a shoe that doesn't fit, you don't cut your toes off, you find another shoe that fits. And I just want to remind everyone that the school board represents all of the kids at Moheramit, not just all of the kids except 66. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Kristen Hool. I live on Mill Road, and I'm a resident of Durham, obviously. I would be redistricted. I've recently switched over. I kind of felt like I had to take it for the team. I felt like that was the way to go. I'm a teacher. I'm a stay-at-home mom right now, but I was a teacher. I agree with everything that the teachers wrote. But then today, I listened to all these families and their reasoning, and I just thought, you know, we need to maybe look at this differently. And I began to see some positives in the K to 2, 3, 4. The one thing that struck me is that it just would not disrupt all 66 of these kids, and that's huge. I mean, what we're concerned about is transition, and we're talking about doing that to these families. The thing that I would ask for, though, is if we do the K to 2, 3, 5, that we look at it kind of as two buildings but a one-school type feel. We get a one PTO working together, and when we have events at Moheramit, everybody's included. And Massway and Greenwich, they would be different because they would be geared toward the grade levels, but that in turn could be a strength. But this divide of the community really became apparent last week to me, and then today, just how disruptive it would be, and it would be disruptive for me as well. The other thing, I think we could continue multi-grade learning. It just could be second graders reading to kindergartners and fifth graders reading to third graders. And then I would just be concerned to have lots of communication and maybe some creativity with like kind of Step Up Day or something like that, where we kind of help these second graders jump into a new school at third grade. And one of the other things that someone said is that this transition into fifth grade has been really hard for many. One, the two-school dynamic, and also they've been in the same home for five years with K to 4. And so maybe that transition would go smoother as we're all one-student body, and they have moved a couple of times. It's just kind of become the norm. My last concern, and this one is, this is the one that still concerns me the most, is I just think the special ed department, you know, that's going to be hard for those students. And I think we really have to be mindful of how to help them just feel comfortable in their new buildings. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Approval of minutes. But we didn't have any. We didn't get them. They're very short. Moving right along. Announcements and commendations from the district.
I'd just like to recognize Rebecca McGewin and four musicians and the children of Moheramit for the job they did and the fun we had at the pumpkin stroll. There were over 1,000 people, and the moon cooperated.
And for all the happy pigs that are eating the pumpkins.
Are they immune to the R snacking?
Jesus.
Sorry.
I can't, I don't have any pig stories, sorry. Did you want to just mention that episode one of season two of OR TV News just premiered yesterday? So I encourage people to check it out. It's on the website, and it'll be on Channel 22 shortly. Kids are doing a great job with that. Second, if you're looking for some musical entertainment, tomorrow night is the fall concert for the Oyster River High School Band and Chorus. So I would encourage you to come and check that out at 7 o'clock in the auditorium. And I did want to just share one statistic that we just finalized from last year, but we just completed our third consecutive year of 100% graduation rate at Oyster River High School. So it's pretty darn good.
Good evening. Carrie Beish from Massway. I just wanted to, first of all, say that today we had a very exciting day at our school. We had an author visit, Marty Kelly, who is from New Hampshire but has many children's books published, was actually, as he called himself, a recovering second-grade teacher. He was absolutely hysterical. He came in and talked with all students about the craft of being an author and particularly a children's author. He talked about the revisions, the multitudes of revisions that the children really couldn't believe it took that many revisions to come up with a children's book. He's also an illustrator, so of course he showed his craft of art as well. He had such a great way of tapping into the various grade levels of students, whether it be first grade or older-grade students. So it was an amazing experience for our students. I thank our librarian, Adele Pulitzer, for bringing him in and really organizing the whole event. This Friday, our PTO is hosting our annual Halloween social from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Everyone is invited to attend. It's throughout the whole, if you've never been, throughout the whole school at Massway, and the courtyard is set up as a spooky walkway. So you will definitely have a lot of fun, games for everyone. I believe our local lead police and fire will be there as well to greet the kids as well. So we're lucky to have their support as well. It is $5 per child. And on Monday, the 28th, just to remind families, if you would like to have your students' school pictures retaken, we are having retakes on Monday. So all you need to do is bring in the packet that you're not so pleased with, and we'll get those retaken for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Just wanted to send some commendations out to the teachers that volunteer. We've had, we have a lot of committees, and I did say we wouldn't have as many committees, but we have committees. But they're all on a volunteer basis, and I really want to commend, this week, the tech mentor committee met, and these are teachers that go above and beyond and help at each building K-12 to provide assistance in different technology. And we met, and the meeting just went fabulous. It was nice for, the teachers all shared a success and a challenge with technology, and we had Sue Johnson and Josh Olstad there, who were able to hear both the good, you know, the commendations and some of the barriers. I think sometimes IT gets to hear, you know, some of the, "This isn't working," or, "Come fix this." And so I think it went really well, and there's a lot of positive feedback from that meeting. Today, we had a professional development master plan committee meeting. We're reworking the professional development master plan that needs to get submitted to the state. But beyond that, it's a guiding document that helps us really decide how we want to grow as a teaching staff and maintain high-quality teachers. And I want to commend the staff that came together, K-12, for a really productive meeting. The conversations are tough sometimes about professional development and how we meet all the needs in the district, so I commend the group as well. Next week, just as a heads up, we do have a writing committee that's starting to look at K-12. We have, again, teaching volunteers that are coming together to talk about writing across the district, to look at what does that progression look like? Do we have, even though we choose all different ways to approach writing, are there some goals and criteria that we want to create across the district for some consistency, even though we choose to go about it in different ways? And then we also have our wellness committee that Kenny sits on that will be meeting next week as well, and there's, a team of them are heading to a workshop in the next week or so to, the topic is on mental health and wellness. So there's a lot going on, and I want to commend all the committees. This is all time that they volunteer, and it's above and beyond, but I feel it's really well-spent. So, thank you. Anne?
Does the state provide any support to, you mentioned having to submit a plan, and I'm curious if the state supplies any support to you for professional development or guidance with regard to the Common Core and recommendations for that development?
Well, as far as the professional development master plan, they give a lot of guidance in how to write the plan. We have templates and rubrics, and we, actually, two of our staff members went to the state, to the Department of Ed on Friday, and were able to be a part of actually scoring other districts' professional development master plans, which is an excellent opportunity. But as far as Common Core, there's been a lot of guidance. I think one of the things that does come to bear is that, one of the things that Common Core does bring to the table is that it's a lot of, tons of open-source materials that in prior, prior standards that have been created, it's really dependent solely upon the state to generate all those resources and the districts to generate resources. So that is a nice piece.
Carolyn, I just want to interject because you can't say this. Carolyn has been key in pulling together assistant superintendents and curriculum coordinators in New Hampshire around unifying our efforts. So the reverse of your question is, is the state learning from school districts? They're learning from school districts, and I would want, this was a perfect place to do it, to commend Carolyn for her efforts in bringing the state to a place where they understand how the needs of school systems. So Carolyn's been instrumental in that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine Flore, Director of Student Services. I just wanted to take a minute and commend the school district, specifically the special education department. We received our parent involvement survey back from the state. I've shared with Dr. Morse, and the state target for this survey is 37%, and our district scored 62%. We've exceeded the target now for a pretty, on a pretty consistent basis. And what this survey tells us is that parents feel involved in their students' education and developing IEPs. They feel a part of the team, and a lot of that is also because we have really strong committed families who work well with us. So I just wanted to take a minute and recognize the staff. The other thing we received back is an indicator report from the state each year. Special education has specific indicators we're measured on to make sure that we're in compliance. And prior to me coming to the position, we were scoring a 7, which is borderline, the state's starting to have input on our federal funds, and we brought that down to a 2, which is no involvement from the state. So again, I wanted to commend the staff on being really open and receptive to some changes and some training we've done with the staff.
Thank you.
Well, it's quite the line tonight. There's been a lot going on at OMS. We've had ski club signups, Washington DC signups. We had our first seventh and eighth grade dance last Friday night. Part of the goal was that to raise some funds. So we had resources available for middle school students that forget their lunch money for the day. So if anyone says out there, if a kid forgets their lunch money, he doesn't have lunch, there's nothing they can do, they're going to go hungry. That's not the case. All they have to do is see myself or Mr. Sullivan and head up to the main office, and we'll make sure that's taken care of. Last week, we wrapped up kneecaps. We view this as our last opportunity to show the state how well we can do at OMS. I want to thank our staff and our students for their best efforts. Our parents also do a great job. We had tons of healthy snacks provided to our kids due to our parents, so thank you to them. And I'd be remiss not to mention our guidance staff, Paula Jean and Joanne. They worked tirelessly behind the scenes in terms of organizing the kneecaps, grades five through eight. They've been scrambling all week to make sure all the makeups are completed, and we need to mail all the stuff off. Lastly, I can assure you, my staff didn't shed a tear, and they will not miss the kneecaps as we start the smart balance the following year. OMS started composting last week. We had Mr. Fox composting come in for an assembly. We showed all the kids how to compost, and we started that last week, and it's going really well. Of course, that was initiative of the Green Team, so just wanted to report on that. I just received the youth risk behavior survey. Actually, today I met with the person that helped organize that. I haven't had the opportunity to even share the results with Dr. Morse or anyone else, but hopefully we can put that on the agenda at some point after the holidays. I'd love to share the results. Of note, we had the best results of any of the other middle schools meeting. Our students are engaging in the healthiest behaviors around the seacoast. Lastly, I promised a friend I'd announce this. Great opportunity on Tuesday, November 5. Julie Kelly's done a great job in organizing this, inspired by the book How Children Succeed: Grit, Curiosity, and the Hidden Power of Character by Paul Tough. Hopefully, I'm pronouncing his name correctly. That's a cool name. Oyster River educators, coaches, guidance counselors from elementary school through high school will participate together in a panel discussion about how we support and foster qualities in our children that lead to success in life. Each panelist will cover a different aspect of this topic, community questions and discussion to follow. This event will be facilitated by Dr. we support and foster qualities in our children that lead to success in life. Each panelist will cover a different aspect of this topic, community questions and discussion to follow. This event will be facilitated by Dr. Newkirk and education consultant Mike Anderson. It will be held in the multipurpose room right here at the high school at 6:30. All are welcome, so please come out on November 5. Thank you.
Thank you. Board, Kenny?
Among the many roles I see us having as a school board is to write and endorse policy. And I believe policy is very crucial. Policy is the rules that we operate by. It sets the standards for our school and the actions that we take. We discuss policy at length at the board table, and those discussions are very respectful and very important. And as policies are presented, we vote on policy. And whether a vote is 7-0 or 4-3, that becomes the board's policy, and we all stand behind it. At our last board meeting, there was a policy that was interpreted in a way that had not been interpreted before, to my recollection. And that brings me to conclude that there is not clarity in that policy. And I think that it's important for the policy committee to bring those policies to the board. I think timing is very crucial, and I specifically would like the policy committee to bring policies BHC and policy GBB, and if there are other pertinent policies that I am missing, to bring them to our next board meeting for discussion and first read. I think timing is very important. I'm going to emphasize that again. And I think we need to make sure that these policies are interpreted amongst us all in that same manner. I'm not talking about voting on a policy and trying to change that vote. I'm talking about interpretation of a policy. So I ask policy committee, please do that.
We'll do our best. We only have one meeting between now and November 6, but we'll do our best.
Thank you.
And the meeting is, when?
30th.
The 30th, 10 to 12. Yep. Anybody else? Then we go on to district reports.
Just wanted to give an update. I know many times I come and just talk about curriculum instruction, not just curriculum instruction, but there are a lot of other things that I do as assistant superintendent that I don't often get to bring up at the podium. One of the things I did want to bring up is that Title I, I'm the Title I coordinator for the district, and Title I, we kicked off the year with a family night. It was a math play, make it, take it. So we had a math night where we were focusing on how families can practice numeracy and math fact and number at home with just a deck of cards and dice, and how to go about doing that. And they took home directions. We had a great night pizza. It was great seeing all the families. Title II, I'm the Title II coordinator as well. That's professional development funds to maintain high-quality staffing. We're gearing up for summer enrichment programs already. We're partnering with Durham Parks and Rec for the summer. We've also reached out to UNH in their IOL. It's a lab for STEM. So we're pretty excited about what we're starting to work on. We have a great team put together to do that. And I also wanted to make people aware that I am also the homeless liaison for the district. So as homeless liaison, I look and reach out for families and provide support. We do have funds through Title I that help those families in need and in transition. We do have families in Oyster River that are indeed homeless, as well as in temporary situations that need assistance. But I want to make sure that if you know of any family or if you know of students that need support, that they know who to contact. I think that's a key piece to helping our families at Oyster River, and I think that's all.
Our nurses are extraordinary.
Yes.
And I hope that you are in contact with them with regard to these families. They stepped up. Every Christmas, they-
Absolutely.
Whether it's a mitten tree, or it's a collection at the high school, our nurses go above and beyond the call of duty, and I hope that-
Right. Absolutely. The staff inside the district are aware of who to call me, but I'm wondering if people know, or just the general public are aware that, you know, how do they help support families that they may hear of? We are working as well on some ideas on how to reach out further to families and help support as a, as a whole community, how we help support families through Durham, Lee, and Manbury. So that's another piece as well.
Thank you.
So Madam Chair, I'd just as soon wait and do my strategic plan update when we're talking about the broad goals and invite this architect in to do his presentation on the conceptual drawings for Mohermit, if that is okay with you?
Yes. We should be, make a motion on the string person?
Yes. Dennis and I both apologized to the board. We did not get you a nomination in advance of this evening. Dennis has a, was alluded to earlier, there's an OREO program, Oyster River Elementary Orchestra, and that program was started by our own music teacher, Sarah Kuhn, and usually we would be on top of this because Sarah would be here, but she's been on maternity leave, and we've had to get a substitute for her. Andrea Oyen is the person that we would like to nominate to you so that we can start the OREO program literally tomorrow. It's a stipended position of $1,500.
Anne?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to nominate the individual-
Andrea Oyen, yeah.
Andrea, without her name in front of me, I don't have that, for the stipended position as strings instructor.
Do I have a second? Moved by Anne, seconded by Kenny. Discussion?
Just want to make sure it's understood what we're voting on. We're voting on the ongoing after-school program at Mohermit. It's available, I believe, for students up through the sixth or seventh grade, I can't remember, for strings. This is-
We also have Mastway children. It's just how is-
Yeah, but there are even children from, from the middle school who participate in the past. So just to make sure people know, this is the ongoing kind of extracurricular program.
Is this a program that Sarah Kuhn started?
Yes.
Yes.
Kenny?
How many children are currently involved?
That is, I have to defer to, I mean, if you know the answer, I don't.
Well, I know last year, there were, I think there were about 15 students who were involved. This year, I don't know, unfortunately. They changed the time, so I can't do it anymore. But I don't know how many students there are now.
Thanks, Dan.
Is this a continuation of the same stipend that's been-
Yes.
-before? So it's not, we're not really doing anything as far as progressing the string program in Oyster River or anything like that?
No, this is just maintaining the program while Sarah is out, because we would lose it if we didn't bring in someone to cover for her.
And I support the program, but I'm curious if, with strings, you know, obviously violin or viola, cello, is there guitar at all? Is that part of it?
No, I don't, I don't know enough about the program. I would suspect not, because it's not typically part of an orchestra.
I know that, that actually, there was some very, there were some other instruments beyond what you would traditionally expect. There was a harpist and a pianist. My daughter was the accompanist for the orchestra.
We do offer guitar at the high school, though.
Further discussion?
Just for clarification, in fact, the middle school jazz band, they are guitarists. So it ends, at some point, by the seventh grade, when they could jazz.
We'll get it to you.
Okay, thank you.
We're doing it phonetically.
Further discussion? Here in Anne, could I have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, Peter in the affirmative, motion carries.
Thank you for both, Dennis, I, and the string students. So Jay, if you wouldn't mind getting Mr. Blatt. You want to get Mr. Blatt?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So the board authorized me to go to a conceptual drawing stage in terms of the potential of adding a cafeteria into the mix at Mohermit. You may recall that the school was built without a separate cafeteria, and conversely, the Mastway school does have a separate cafeteria during one of its renovations. And the difference in the quality of what's happening during FISED is, you know, just tangible. The difference in the quality of the eating experience for the students at Mohermit and Mastway is obvious. The, the issue of trying to feed 407 students or 292 students, if this was a Mastway issue, while, while you're in a gym, makes that issue problematic. The Mohermit School also has several safety issues that, you know, we'd want the board to be aware of. If any of you have ever tried to enter the cafeteria from the outside as an adult, delivery person, or as a cook, or as the cook supervisor, you're literally walking right into a hole. The ramp is so severe that it's nothing short of dangerous. Doris Demirz, our food service coordinator, has fallen in it several times while trying to deliver food into the kitchen. So you have a safety issue, and of course, anytime you're mixing FISED and food, that's not a very palatable kind of arrangement. So in the concept stage, I invited Steve Blatt. Steve, you can come to the podium. Steve is an architect of some renown in Maine, and a person that I've worked with before. I explained the situation to him and told him that the board had authorized me to go as far as getting the concept drawings down, and Steve has done that. He actually has come up with a really imaginative and inventive solution that neither Dennis and I foresaw when we sat with Steve the very first time. So Steve has been in the district several times. He's met with key staff members, including the FISED teacher this week. And we want to share this concept with you tonight and get a reading from the board as to whether you are amiable to us progressing, because the next stage is actually going forward and hiring an architect. So Steve's not necessarily the architect, but I'm, I'm sure he will be in the mix as one of, one to be considered. So Steve has got us to this point. I asked him to be here tonight so that he could talk about how he would resolve the situation of a school without a cafeteria in the current Mohermit School. So Steve, I turn the podium over to you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, everybody. Nice to be here. I've been in the district several times over the last few weeks. It's a very nice place you have here. Your schools are in very good shape, at least the elementary schools. And it's, it's nice to reunite with Jim. We worked a lot together in Maine several years ago. We have spent a good deal of time in the school. We've talked to the principal, food services director, FISED director, custodial staff. And I think we have a fairly good understanding of what is needed. This is a plan of just the gym wing currently at Mohermit. This is the entrance, the office, and you come down and into the gym. We had initially talked to Dr. Morse about adding on cafeteria here towards the parking lot.
Steve, can you carry the mic with you while, is that such, in such a way that you can pull it out? Yeah, great, thanks.
We had initially expected that we might be looking here, and we did look at that. But when one renovates, the fingers reach out into the school, and you can find sort of unexpected surprises. And because Dr. Morse informed us that we had a limited budget, we decided to look elsewhere and in different directions so that the project could be as simple and clear as possible. And, and in that, we quickly understood what the structure in the gym was doing. All of the structure goes this way. Therefore, this is not a structural wall. This is currently where the gym ends. So we're proposing to add this blue portion to the gym with a smaller storage area off here in the corner, and then to install a movable partition here, similar to the partition that separates the music room from the gym now. And this can literally be folded and moved into a storage alcove. Now, there were several issues that drove our thinking, and the first was the programming efficiency. Currently, the gym and the cafeteria are one space, so that means that when tables need to be set up and knocked down, FISED can't be carried on. And it also leads to the situation where during FISED time, tables are stacked here. There are some tables stacked here. There are mats on the floor. There are a few pieces of equipment that are used for the cafeteria experience that stay here. And so when we met with FISED teacher, she requested that if she could have a dedicated space that were just for FISED, and if she could get some storage space, it would make the delivery of her program more effective. She'd get more minutes per day, per week with the students. She would have a safer environment. We did notice that when we're in the gym, there are other things than FISED equipment sort of hanging around. So in terms of program efficiency, we wanted to make sure that the gym, if possible, had a dedicated area, and also that the cafeteria had a dedicated area so that instead of the rolling lunches that you do now, which is a new small group of students comes in every few minutes, we've, we've designed this with enough capacity so that when you do balance the, the enrollment between this and Mast, you will be able to have three distinct lunches here of a reasonable period of time. That, I think, not only creates less chaos in the cafeteria, it's probably a little less difficult for staff, and I think you would just have less traffic during the eating period. So programming was to try to make the cafeteria experience less chaotic, less noisy, less dynamic, and also to create a better area for FISED. Then we looked at the health situation. I am certainly one in favor of not playing where you eat, or eating where you play. And so if you possibly can have a dedicated space, that was our intent. And I think that that has a lot to do with the experience which every student has every single day of socializing and getting nutrition and coming and going. So that's the, the health issue. And the last is safety, and that came to us, actually, the more we studied the situation. Not only do we worry about things on the floor that are not FISED equipment, but we also are concerned about staff. And this ramp is really nasty. And so after looking at several opportunities to perhaps reorient the, the ramp, we came to the conclusion that simply by extending the concrete sidewalls and making the slope much less steep, and then perhaps, if possible, extending the canopy that currently covers a small area out further, that would really solve most of the problems in a very succinct way. So the proposal is to add about 1,700 feet of new space, including gym storage, which is about three times what she has, giving her current storage room back to the kitchen, which does need more space, and then adding a dedicated maintenance storage area, which is sorely needed. Currently, there's supplies stored in the mechanical, electrical, and water room, and also along this corridor, which is not safe and not efficient. If those supplies could be stored here, you can take inventory very quickly, know what you have and know what you don't have. So that's the proposal. It's about 1,700 square feet of new space. We've put together a budget for you, which we will supply to the superintendent. It's about a $575,000 project. It's about $460,000 in construction. There's a very small amount of site work. There are some renovations to make the cafeteria end of the hall nicer. Now, the reason we made this a movable wall is so that this can be moved and stored so that you can still have a large room for presentation. This is a section through the building which shows the gym is currently here. We're proposing to add on to the gym in this direction with full height. And then at the partition that we would build that carries the movable wall, on the cafeteria side, we'd actually lower the ceiling, put in an acoustic ceiling, put acoustic panels on the wall so that when you come into the cafeteria, you don't get knocked over by the wall of sound. We're trying to make the cafeteria a more cafeteria-like space so that you don't feel like you're eating in the gym, which would be nice. But yet, it allows us to have an even bigger gathering focusing on the stage. After 35 years of practice, I find that sometimes the subtler moves are the better ones in architecture. And so this is fairly subtle. You won't see this addition as you approach the school. I think it's a retexturing of the interior of the building by simply putting a broad stripe on the floor. These PE students will know to do this, and the cafeteria use will be down here. We're still considering whether or not we should cut a service window into this wall so that the service line is actually in the cafeteria rather than going into the kitchen. That would give us some more square footage in the kitchen, and they could use it. There's a lot of stuff going on in that kitchen now. Some of their equipment could use improvement. Their refrigeration is less than wonderful. So we're looking at all of those issues. But the big picture and the big budget items are this. In the budget, we are proposing that not only is there money for the new construction, also for the renovations. There are contingencies included, fees, environmental permitting and planning board appearances, and then some money for construction testing in soils. For a project of this scope, I don't think that you need a clerk of the works on site. It is a small project. We find that smaller projects cost more per square footage. It's a different kind of contractor who's interested. This is, it's not a house builder, but it's not a bridge builder. So you've got to find a commercial contractor who understands concrete and steel, who understands working in an occupied building on a fairly tight site. But we are experienced in that if we should be eventually involved in construction. But I think that this is a good, straightforward concept. There's nothing terribly mysterious about it. And I would be pleased to answer questions. Yes?
In the illustrated section on the bottom of your diagram, that shows a lowered ceiling in the cafeteria section?
Yes.
So roughly, what would the height of the ceilings be in the cafeteria?
Ceiling in the cafeteria would be about 12 feet as compared to about 17 to 18 feet in the gym. And that's a real difference.
Do you conceive that it is possible to keep the new construction separate from the existing building until you're ready to break through and then potentially use the existing gym space for the current cafeteria while you modify the existing cafeteria so there's always a space to use?
Yes. All of the construction would occur. The only thing I would be at all concerned about is that there's an exit door right here. And during construction, we have to keep the place code compliant for exits. So we would have to create some kind of a snow fence exit ramp. But all of this would be built. This probably would need to be done over a vacation because you have to keep daily access to the kitchen. And then I think probably, depending on when you can build this, this renovation could take place from 3:00 in the afternoon until 11:00 at night. We've done that before in occupied schools. But it might be more likely that it be done either over a break. It's not a lot of, the roughest part of this is we want to cut windows in that wall so that there's natural light. Your gym does not benefit from nice light. It has high light. It barely gives the students an understanding of what's going on outside. Lately, in the gymnasium and multipurpose rooms we've been designing, they have windows down lower. As long as they're not high school kids trying to throw a baseball through the window, usually the windows are fairly safe. And they make a huge difference in the environment of the room. So we would be putting windows, in fact, the woods here are so beautiful that that would be prettier than any painting we could do on that wall to put windows there. And then bringing daylight into the cafeteria seems to be a good opportunity.
What is our setback on that?
The code setback is 20, and we have 28 or 30. It's close, but we don't need a variance.
Thank you.
It looks from the plan that the existing kitchen will be able to stay pretty much intact. Is that correct?
It will.
Okay. And my eyes probably aren't that good. Is that dishes?
This is dishes.
Dishes, okay.
Currently, this is the dish window.
Okay.
And it's interesting that you say that. We're all excited about putting a cafeteria out here because it would be publicly visible. You could have an entrance into it. But we started to delve into how much kitchen work we would need to do to redo and redo, and it ended up being too expensive.
That's what I thought.
This made more sense.
Great.
Yes.
The cafeteria is going to be smaller. I mean, when it's a designated cafeteria, it's going to be a smaller space than the space that it's occupied, that it occupies now.
Right now, it can take over as much of the gymnasium as it needs to, which is probably not good. This would be a designed circulation and seating plan. These show eight-person rounds. Eight students in fixed seats around a foldable round table. We have found that to be the most appreciated when all is said and done. It may not be the most efficient in terms of space, but it is a far better social situation. They're easier to move, the tables, when you do need to, and they will need to move them to clean. But there's much less looking down the aisle and yelling. There's much less clickiness going on. We're at this end, and you can't come sit with us. It's much more equal. So this has 120 seats. So this means that your 360 kids are in three clear groups. And we have, I was fascinated. I've never seen a rolling seating like you do there. And this is more common and traditional. According to food service, it would probably work better. And so that's what Dr. Morris and we talked about, and it seemed to be better. Right now, there are kids continually moving through the school, coming to lunch and going back because they don't go outside and around. And this would mean that there would be two waves, the first, and then a wave and a wave. That's probably easier to take, less interruptive. You know when you're eating. It's a little less dynamic, but it's, I imagine that this will be far less chaotic. It's pretty chaotic right now.
Is it possible, you talk about the setback, we do have another eight to 10 feet of flexibility. If we, I'm concerned that perhaps 120 isn't large enough. So if we wanted to increase that 10%, we do have some room where we could make the addition a little larger and shift everything.
Right. You can move this. And if you do, we'd want you to move this. But what's interesting is that this is actually less square footage than it currently is, but there's nothing usurping gym space. It's absolutely all gym. And with the increased storage, that should be a completely clear floor.
So if those are eight-person tables, and you wanted to add five of them, that would be 30 more seats for another row of, so what kind of space? How many feet is that?
It takes about, that's a five. If we had another 10 feet, and we added 10 feet here, that would give you another row of tables. Okay?
I don't know who the best to answer the question, you or you? It's like, I've heard the idea that the only reason that we're adding this cafeteria to Mohermit is because Mohermit is overcrowded.
Sure. I'll take that.
Yeah.
So if we compare the two schools again, and, you know, we tend to be doing that a lot this fall, the Masway School has 292 students. Last year, it had, you know, a little over 300. It's not about the size of the building. It's about the safety issues, and it's about a dedicated place to eat. So whether you have 292 students at Masway or 407 kids at Mohermit, that's not the issue. The issue is, how do we want our children to be able to eat during the course of a day? And the way that we currently do it at Mohermit, and I've not heard a single person, you know, say, "Yay, we have this great eating environment at Mohermit," we really are hurting kids through lunch. And it's just a despicable way to feed children. And so, you know, we don't do that at Masway because during one of the renovations, a principal, and a school board, and a superintendent said the same thing I'm saying. We've got to have a place to have kids sit down and eat. And so Masway, during one of the renovations, achieved what Mohermit hasn't achieved, a dedicated lunchroom. So it's not about the 407 versus 292. If we equalize next year, and there's 350 and 360, or 340 and 360, whatever that number's going to be, doesn't change the need to have a place where children can sit down and eat like human beings. And so that's what this is about. It's about creating a sensible, pleasant environment for our children to eat. And part of the issue that happens at Mohermit that is due to enrollment is the way that Dennis has to run the kids through the lunchroom. But that's a different issue. You know, the hurting effect is about trying to get 407 kids through that lunchroom. But if it was 350, and he had three separate lunches, just like Masway, then the children would be able to sit down, enjoy each other's company, talk pleasantly. The children at Mohermit talk pleasantly now. They're not shouting across the length of the room. But because it's a gymnasium, the sound is bouncing off the walls. The ceiling is so high, their voices get lost, and it just becomes this very crackly, noisy place where staff then try to quiet the kids down in a way that feels to the children and to the parents of the children like they're being shushed all the time. You know, it's kind of the choo-choo train effect. Shh, 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 shh. And the kids are really just talking like normal human beings. The way they would talk in your house, Al, the way they would talk in my house at the dinner table, works at Masway, doesn't work at Mohermit. And then, you know, the idea that you're eating in a gymnasium is somewhat on the gross side. And so, you know, we really need to be thinking about what we're teaching the kids when they come in to eat. And then the issue of safety in the gymnasium is really true. If you walk into the gymnasium at Mohermit, it's a collection of devices around the perimeter. So the FISED teacher is trying to teach FISED. They may be doing a running exercise or a running game. They can run right into a table, the way it's set up now. And this solution means that there's less opportunity for children to get hurt. So it's really not about the number of students. It's about the concept that we want children to be able to have their lunch in peace, much like they do at home or that they do at Masway.
Thank you.
So if I could add, Madam Chair, because I was expecting one of your esteemed colleagues to ask me to remind you how this is funded. And I think it's important. I think it's important just to remind everybody. And plus, I want to, again, say what an asset Sue is to me because we started talking about funding again, and she said, "Remember." So I'm going to give you her remember as I talk about this. The voters in the district have raised a certain level of funding to run the school district. And at the time that they approved the funding last March, we did not know what the ultimate outcome or when the ultimate outcome would be in terms of a lawsuit that was against LGC, our healthcare provider. And ultimately, we got a letter this summer that said that we would receive a payment holiday on our health insurance, and that's part of the settlement. That amount is about $688,000. And again, I would say a piece of that belongs to our employees that we have to reimburse them because they paid in, and they get that money back. But the lion's share of it, because of how we run our benefits, is the district's money. And so my proposal to the board is to utilize that one-time opportunity to be able to fund a construction project that really should have been part of the original design of the building. And as Steve was doing the investigation on the drawings from the original drawing of Mohermit, this actually was intended to be the solution. So here we are nearly 30 years later. 30 years later, Dennis? 30 years later, and a different architect from a different state comes up with the exact same solution. So, you know, it really says that, you know, great minds think alike. And so Steve has come up with a solution that makes economical sense. Had we gone with the solution outside, towards the parking lot, it would have been 120, $25,000 more. So he recognized that we had a tight budget and came up with a solution that was within our budget. So the LGC money has been approved by the voters in March. And rather than turn it back to the taxpayers, which is an option at the end of the year, I'm asking you, and then we'll ask the voters, to allow us to use that money to do this project. In addition, you might recall during last year's budget season, Sue proposed drawing down a capital improvement account that has existed forever in the district, some $98,000 last year. And what she suggested today, not today, this week to me, was, you know, that also is available to us. And that money currently exists in a fund that we would need release of the voters for, just like we're asking them to support this construction project. So we do have the money to pay for the project if you approve it, and then if the voters approve it. So the authority to approve the project actually could stop here, but that's not what I'm asking you to do. I'm asking, let's go the full monty here and bring it to the voters so that no one later can say, "Where'd that money come from? How was it used?" You know, the kind of things that happened in the rumor mill. So by getting voter approval, I think what we are doing is validating that that's indeed what the voters want as opposed to taking it back through taxpayer relief. And if they vote it down, obviously, they get it back. So it doesn't go away. But I just think this is an investment in the future of our facilities that has been on the drawing block since Dennis was hired when this building opened. And he could tell you that he has talked to superintendent after superintendent over the years, has promoted it to school board after school board over the years. It's a big ticket item, and it's never risen to the surface as it can this year. And that's why I've been promoting it as strongly as I have because, you know, this will be here for a very, very long time servicing the future of the Mohermit students, whatever configuration they're in.
Tom?
If Warren Arndt was approved, just in terms of timing, would it be possible that the addition could be completed by September? I mean, is that realm of possibility?
Only, Tom, this is the place where there's a couple of stages to get to the voters. In order to have this done, and the soonest we think, Stephen and I think it could be done, would be October, a year from now. It's a six-month project, to give or take whatever happens with the weather on the outside. If we could get permission from the board to spend another $45,000, then the architect of choice can do all the drawings. The contractor would see the drawings. The contractor would be able to go out and get prices to validate Steve's estimates. If all of that happened, when we go to the voters in March and they approve it, we could start construction April vacation. And we would be done, all things going our way, in October. So again, we have the money. We can use the money. I would strongly support using the money because if we don't, then we get the voter approval, then we have to go out and hire the architect. It's going to be another year before we would have, beyond what I've just said, before we could have that cafeteria ready for students.
Just to follow up, do we have authorization? Could we authorize that $45,000?
Yes.
Where does that come from?
Well, it's going to be coming from our, well, ultimately, it'll be coming from the LGC money. But if it didn't come from the LGC money, then we could get release of the capital improvement money because that's what it's involved in as well. So we have two different pots we could go to.
Madam Chair, I make the motion that the board authorize the superintendent to use these one-time holiday LGC funds, as well as our current capital improvement funds, to authorize $45,000 for the hiring of an architect of choice and the remainder to pay for the project.
That was moved by Ann, seconded by Megan. Discussion, Kenny.
I'm just not familiar with the process of hiring an architect. Is this something that gets bid out? How does that whole process work?
I don't have the policy at my fingertips, do you, Sue? We have a policy that allows us to bid out or allows us to do a selection process. And the selection process in this case would be soliciting three architects to come forward to be willing to do the work that Steve's conceptualized here. So that's in policy. And we can use that policy to go that direction, which expedites the selection process rather than going out for an IRFP.
Okay.
And I also should say in answer to Ann's motion, should the voters not approve it, we'll sit on contracted service money in the budget that would have been used for something else to make sure that we keep ourselves whole through this process. So essentially, that would mean that work that we would have contracted out through facilities will wait until the spring to make sure that we have the money to cover the motion that Ann made.
And it comes back to us to approve. The board gets the bid.
We can, yeah, absolutely. It can be staying at management or if you want, we can bring the successful candidate straight to you. But we can do that, no problem, the selection process.
What does the policy, well, we have to look at the policy.
We'll get it.
Megan?
I have a few architectural questions and a few questions for Dr. Morris. Obviously, the noise issue in the cafeteria is a major concern. That partition wall, is that going to be, I assume that would be sufficient to keep the sound divided during that? You know, it seems like it's a temporary type of structure. How effective will that be?
Those partition walls are very well engineered. They are, they come in four-foot wide panels by about 12-foot tall. And they bifold on a track above and below. So they're, and they're about so thick, two and a half inches thick. They have acoustic surfaces that are also washable, but they're also full of acoustic material. So if a fifth grader rolls into one, he'll bounce right off. It will not collapse. It's not like a curtain.
Right, okay.
It's a rigid wall. And they have very good acoustic value. If you're going to have lunch and next door be trying to do an elocution lesson, I would suggest we don't do that. But you can certainly hold a phys ed class and talk to the students while lunch is going on.
And just to make sure I understand, so there will be a door outside from the gymnasium?
There is currently a door here from the gymnasium. And we're going to put a pair of doors here that will replace those doors. That's for emergency egress only.
What's over there?
Lawn.
Okay, is that?
It leads around to the portables.
Okay. And then, I haven't seen this in operation, but we have had salad bar. Would we still be able to?
Yes, you'll have a salad bar. And Igor, the recycling gnome, will be here. And there's condiments. We're actually going to work with food service, we hope, if we have the opportunity, to really make this just the best it can be. Those things can stay there. So even though you'll bring the salad bar back in, it'll have its place with the receptacle, so that'll all work much better.
Okay.
And it actually frees up space back in here because after-school activity storage is here, and we can relocate this here at the side of the stage around the corner. And part of this storage will be for extra chairs on trucks so that when you need to have an event, those chairs can be stored here.
Now, Ann Lane asked a question about adding another column or row, whatever, of tables. How much, I mean, I don't know, how much incrementally does that add to the project? I mean, it doesn't seem like it would.
I'd want to check the boundary line, although I'm not so sure that it would be hard to get a slight variance from the town. Because I think this is an accommodating of butter, but we could see. But I think if you went out 10 feet, you'd probably be okay. And that would increase the cost. This is 62 feet long, so that would be 620 feet. That would cost many tens of thousands of dollars more. I could do that estimate for you.
So that gives us 40 more seats, is that right?
That would give you, five-eighths is 40.
Okay.
Using your figures, Steve, it would be $139,000 at $225 a square foot.
It would be $139,000. So then, Dr. Morris, do you recommend that this plan include that? I mean, that's a big.
Well, if this was a big project, lots of times what you do is you create options over and above the basic presentation so Steve could actually do a drawing that shoots that out 10 feet in his design phase. And then we would know what it costs and we can decide whether we could fund it or not.
You can also put that out to bid as an ad alternate, meaning you would ask the bidders to say, "What will that cost? And were we to move this out 10 feet more, what addition would you charge for that?"
But I think we need a level of specificity for putting it on a warrant article, don't we, to be able to say?
Yeah, we would do that. We would figure all that out long before it went to a warrant.
We're not doing that today.
No. While we're talking about today is having an architect make, draw the drawings for us that would allow a contractor to look at them and estimate prices.
Okay, here's the other question I have is, obviously, we're grappling with this decision about the configuration of our elementary schools. You know, I just have to make sure that this configuration would be suitable to any outcome that we end up with.
Yeah, this design, as Steve has presented it, would apply to any decision the board made related to redistricting students.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
I don't believe it exists, but are there any environmental concerns to moving the building out? The earth is severely swaled down. And so my concern, one would be water. Not that it's environmental water, but water brought in from the sky. And if we do extend the depth, we now are creating even a more severe slope. So would you mind?
We've been trying to figure out why this building is bermed as it is. We're still trying to figure it out. We discovered that there are things buried around here, and it's prettier to berm over them than not. But back here, the earth comes up about four feet above the gym floor, which is not generally a terribly good thing to do. We would excavate that, and we would then grade that both this way and this way and get rid of it. You have severe water problems here. Part of our design would be civil design, which does away with those water problems and takes this this way and that way. And environmental regulations require us that if we're going to build impermeable construction, this no longer soaks into the ground, it has to be runoff. We have to keep things just like they are in terms of the environment. You can't worsen runoff. Have to control it and treat it. And that's part of our job.
What about a rain garden?
Well, that would be lovely. I would love to do that. And I want to figure out, this is south here. It would be great to put a rain garden here. It would be lovely in this backyard. And there's nothing going on here. Nothing. It's a big lawn. And that would be a wonderful project. That would be a terrific student project.
So the board knows, I asked Steve to produce a half dozen of these larger drawings, not quite as big as this particular one, so they could be placed at Mohearmot and Masway as well as the town offices. So that, and then I would create, I got this idea, this is not my idea, it's actually one I'm stealing from the town of Madbury when they were talking about their library. They had an easel in the town and they had a description of the project and how it was going to be funded. And I think that would be beneficial for us to have that same type of arrangement at our town offices and in our schools so that anytime somebody's walking to the town office, they'd see this, they'd educate themselves about it. Anytime anybody's walking into any one of our schools, they'd see this, they'd be able to educate themselves about it. So Steve has produced enough of the larger drawings that we can do that. I've talked to two of the town offices. They're willing to host the drawings for us and, of course, our schools will. So I also have asked that Doris, you know how Doris has been putting on her suppers around the natural foods and the beef stews and the farm-fresh vegetables and so forth, if she would be willing to do that instead of here at the high school to host one at the Mohearmot school, not for us to be able to, again, publicize the project and how it would be funded and get some traffic around it outside of board meetings.
Further discussion, to see if you get the $45,000. Hearing none. Could I have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, Peter in the affirmative. Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Steve, if you want to leave the drawings, is Jay still back there in the corner? Or Carolyn's right there. You can leave all of the drawings with Carolyn and she'll take care of them for us.
Strategic plan.
Did we want to get Peter done? Peter, do you have a?
I have nothing right now, but thanks.
And Sue, did you have anything for tonight? Do you figure we won't get your fill tomorrow? Okay, well, thank you, Madam Chair. In your packets, you had a pretty extensive report of the work that we've done to date. And I'm going to pass out these yellow sheets to the board, which really is what I'll be asking later for the board to support. So the yellow sheets I'm passing out are the broad goals, and that ultimately is what I would be asking the board to approve this evening. But in the meantime, I thought I would give you a little bit of background and then I'm going to ask Carolyn and Sue to join me in presenting the work to date. This process did not start with Jim Morse. This process did not start with this board. It started with several superintendents ago. It started with several boards ago. And the process came to a halt due to the transition in leadership in the district. But there was a lot of great work done. A lot of good people put in a lot of time. So I asked the board for permission to resurrect the project through a future search process. And we invited over 100 community members, including business leaders and parents and students and staff and administrators and teachers, all to be part of a process where we took the work that had been done and made sure we were totally aware of it, but then carried it into what, basically, what do we want Oyster River to be, a more future-oriented discussion. From that evening, which was incredibly well-attended, we ended up breaking into three work groups. One was academic and one was finance and operations, and the last one was communications. And ultimately, what we were attempting to do in those work groups is create essentially a position paper for why those are the three subcommittees. And then in addition, create the broad goals that would guide our staffs in creating the more specific action activities and strategies that would support these broad goals. So we've had the pleasure of board members being on these committees and participating in future search. And so over the period of a year, I've been keeping you totally abreast of this work. So before we get to a point where I ask you to take action, I'm going to ask Carolyn to come to the podium first. The whole point of the work we do around a strategic plan is really about the academic component. And you'll see that in the presentations that Sue and I do. The school system exists for one purpose, and that's to progress students to their maximum capability through the 13 years we have them. So Carolyn's group, and Carolyn leading it, wrote a position paper on the academic piece, and I would ask you to read that to the public because we don't have the PowerPoint going tonight. Do you have that? And the three, not the three goals, the goals that reflect your component of work.
We have five. So I'll start to read our narrative. "The overarching goal for academic engagement at ORCSD is to ensure that every student develops the critical skills and body of knowledge they need to thrive in our ever-changing and increasingly global community. The academic committee examined information created at the 2013 Future Search event, the adopted vision statement, and ongoing curriculum work in the district to inform their goals for curriculum instruction, assessment, technology, and data management and reporting. We believe in creating safe, stimulating environments where all students are challenged and excited about their opportunities to learn. And at the heart of our educational philosophy is the firm belief that all of our students have talents, skills, and abilities. It is up to all of us in the ORCSD community to provide individual learning experiences that engage all our learners. We take pride in our capacity to provide innovative practices in our curriculum, which includes the effective use of technology in the hands of our students. We have committed, dynamic, and stimulating faculty members who continuously reflect on their instruction and assessment to implement the best instructional practices for our students. They reach out and partner with each other and the community on behalf of advancing student learning throughout ORCSD."
So I need to stop there, Carolyn, and share with the board that this document that was written was vetted through not just the subcommittee that Carolyn worked with vigorously, but also through the larger Future Search Committee because we re-invited them to a meeting so that we could share the work that we had been doing. And so this product that you're seeing tonight is not just Carolyn's product, it's the product of the great minds in Oyster River who chose to participate on the academic component. And you had, how many people on the subcommittee, Carolyn, if everybody showed up the same night?
Roughly, I think we had about 15, 15 to 18 people. Kenny, is, I think that, is that roughly? I'm trying to think.
People would come and go, but I think.
Yeah, I'm envisioning the conference table and how packed we were around the conference table. And I think we were, on any given night, 15 strong.
So Carolyn, would you just read through the broad goals as your committee is recommending them to the board?
The first broad goal is personal excellence. ORCSD inspires all learners to pursue personal excellence, academic challenge, and success. This was one of the goals that we really felt. We didn't want certain work to go forgotten or for community members to feel that their input was overlooked. So there is a little caveat on the bottom or note, if you will, in italicized text that refers to some of the recommendations. This isn't that they would all be implemented in this five-year period, but that we would examine all of these recommendations, including full-day kindergarten, STEM, world languages, arts, habits of mind, and early college offerings. So those were the pieces that I knew the committee felt strongly that we not overlook and that we examine those as we look to how to meet these goals, these broad goals. Yes.
What is meant by habits of mind?
That was something that came out of, I think it's just a way of approaching the academics. So I believe it's a curriculum, this we'd need more clarity on, but it was one of the pieces that was brought forth in the Future Search by someone in the community. It could be educators as well.
Okay, I just want to be clear. So these are broad goals, but then your group is recommending all these specific things?
No. These were just, this was just a note that there was concern that because these were broad goals, that some of the group members, and I think I could honestly say all the group members, were a little concerned that by forming these broad goals, that some of the recommendations from the community might get lost. This was just a note. We were worried that the community from the Future Search would feel that that work and some of the interests of the community would be overlooked.
So the language says recommends, OK, the working group recommends ORCSD initiate or strengthen these things. What is, I guess, I just want to make sure we're clear on what the statement represents.
You know, we could even, honestly, Megan, we could take that off. It was just almost like a footnote as opposed to a.
Okay, because I just want to, I mean, are we saying that your group is saying we should implement full-day kindergarten? I mean, STEM is so broad.
The only recommendation this evening, Megan, are the broad goals themselves.
Right. Right.
Okay, I won't get hung up in that.
Maybe, I'll try to explain to it. So the process was one, trying to achieve what we thought were broad goals. We felt that it was sort of a blueprint that would be filled in through the administration and then teachers as well. So it was going, the particulars were going to be filled in. And it was difficult to kind of draw that line. And I think that there had been a wonderful effort at a strategic plan. And I think what happened, why that never came to fruition is maybe there was so much detail being packed into there. So the approach that we took was to try to just be broad and let the education experts fill that in. We were very, very mindful, though, that our task was to reflect the super, I'm sorry, I'm blanking the name, the super-search kind of-
Future search.
Future search program that we did with a group of 100. And so we always worked from the input we got from that group. And so there was a lot of discussion. Some people really wanted to fill in detail and others felt comfortable keeping the broad. So the things listed here were some of the things mentioned at Future Search. And maybe a better way to word it would be that we, that these might be considered and certainly not be limited to. We didn't mean that-
Okay.
Outside of this, nothing else should exist, nor did we feel that all of these had to be, but they were suggestions to reflect.
That helps because I, when I read this, I think these are some very specific areas. And then I think there's some other areas that could lend itself towards academic challenge and success and personal excellence that are not included.
Right.
And I'm sure you've had a lot of the discussions about this, so I will not talk anymore about it.
I think it's very important to-
No, along those lines of what Kenny-
No, that helps, thank you.
Along the lines of what Kenny was saying, that we didn't want to get to the end of a five-year period and be concerned, and I think all of us were a little concerned that we would get to the end of the five years and what if people said, nothing on our list was even considered? You know, we didn't want to inadvertently overlook things and not consider, but-
That's life, so sometimes you get-
So Carolyn, just in terms of time, just move on to the next goal, please.
Yeah. Goal number two is college and career ready. We spent a lot of time on this, on this goal and really choosing the wording carefully. ORCSD students are encouraged to be critical thinkers, creative problem solvers, effective communicators, and socially responsible citizens who are college and career ready, prepared to pursue the path they choose. Number three, innovative personalized instruction. Innovative student-centered instructional practices will support personalized learning for all ORCSD students. Four, assessment for learning. ORCSD will develop and implement a systematic approach to assessment that monitors and documents learner progress toward achievement over ORCSD's common set of learner expectations, informs instruction for each learner, includes frequent feedback specific to the learning goals, and incorporates multiple diverse and authentic ways to demonstrate learning. And number five, reporting learner progress. ORCSD will develop and support an evidence-based system that uses a technology platform that allows students' information to be shared among ORCSD staff to inform instruction, provides a clear, accurate record of achievement, and communicates progress of all learners, is user-friendly, easily accessible to all learners, parents and staff, collects evidence of learning using creative and varied strategies, and is supported by quality training for all users, especially staff.
Anne?
I would like to add to Kenny's comment, my experience of working with the group and the sentiment that I took away from some community members who were involved in Future Search and then involved in this committee, that they were afraid that there were some goals, specific goals they had in mind that, not intentionally, but would be overlooked, wouldn't come to fruition. They were goals, specific goals, to be implemented into our curriculum for our kids. And again, these were community members, they weren't administrators, they weren't staff, they weren't school board, but they were folks who gave of their time and monthly, from Future Search all the way through. And I really have to honor that commitment. And for them, it was quite frustrating that this committee did not come down to what their belief was it was going to come down to, which was a list of things that they saw as goals. And I think that it would be truly irresponsible of us not to acknowledge that that was the belief of some community members for getting involved.
And if I may on that, Anne, right from the beginning of the process, we were talking about broad goals and not getting into the specificity because my experience in building strategic plans is if all the specificity is done at 5,000 feet, none of the plan gets implemented at ground level. And by having the community engagement and involvement that we had, we had that wonderful dialogue, even debate about that very issue. But in the end, what I know is that if we put these broad goals out to the principals and the directors and they're working with their staffs, what we'll get back will be meaningful enough that we can guarantee it will be implemented. So the past of building strategic plans at the superintendent level and handing them out to buildings and putting them on shelves really has been the history of strategic plans. And obviously, you know, late in your community, you wish you knew everything that you knew at the very beginning by the time you get to my place. And one of those things that I learned was stay at the broad level with community engagement heavy and then bring it to the principal level and director level to get the specifics. So it really becomes a meaningful plan. And also keeping the duration short. Historically, when the chair and I, at the beginning of our careers, strategic plans were always talked about as 10-year plans. Well, what happens three years out is the board's transformed probably at least once. And by the time you get to the fifth year, nobody remembers what the strategic plan was. And ultimately, the superintendent turns over and pretty soon, that wonderful document that you thought you were creating that would guide the future is really just a paperweight. So this process engages the community, I think, absolutely at the right level. This is what's important to us. And then we engage, our responsibility is to gauge the staff to say, okay, this is where the community wants us to head. What is it that we're going to do K through 12 to make sure this happens? So for example, the college and career ready goal feels very heavy as a high school issue. The fact is, for Todd to be able to achieve the college career readiness goal, Jay has to be, and his staff have to be, working on it. And even Dennis and Kerry have to be working on it. So it's not an issue that resides solely in the 9 through 12 domain. So I really think it's an important piece that you brought up and I just, I'm glad you did so I could just reinforce why we're at the broad goal level. So thank you.
And I do, I feel really strongly that these are important goals for us to have in academics at Oyster River. I feel as we look forward in the next five years, that we really use these as our guide. I think we've always, we have a mission statement that says, working together to engage every learner. If we really believe that, then these goals would help us really make that a reality, that we have a mission statement, that we walk the walk, that we actually have, what do we mean by personal excellence? And being able to say that we do meet individual student needs and we do capture and we know for sure. Those are, I think, critical pieces for us to be able to answer and feel confident about. And I think those goals get us there. And being transparent to parents about how their students are doing. I think that's another piece to this.
Tom?
I just wonder what you mean by personal excellence? I mean, it seems, you talk about ethics, I mean, it seems to be such a general term.
We did talk about, at one point, I think there was the word ethics in the-
It's still there.
And is, right, ethically. And Kathleen Young, I think, did a nice job. They had just finished a journalism, of course, and it talked about ethics in journalism. And she said, you know, we do, there are pieces that we want students to have as far as being ethically-minded, I guess, or knowing what the ethics are behind certain aspects of what they may encounter in their, in their future. When we looked at personal excellence, we wanted, it goes along with students having choice and being challenged and having the, and having the option of choosing different pathways. And I think when you look at some of the suggestions that fall under there, it does provide some opportunities for students to allow them to personally identify and create a path that might be limiting right now, that we don't offer some opportunities for kids, like the idea of dual credit and that piece around college offerings early, that there might be students that might not consider going to college, that might not, that might have this idea of their definition of personal excellence right now is very limiting because they feel that there are limitations. But if we open doors for them at the high school level as far as considering early college offerings, we've now provided another opportunity for that child that might not have considered that. It wasn't the path that they were on when they were born.
I mean, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
I think the term itself is almost undefined.
Yeah.
And I think that as a goal, you know, I would know, you know, you're talking about like it's the ability to make choices. Okay, if that's the definition, that should be, I think it should be defined. Otherwise, I don't know how you would assess something as-
How do we measure that? Right, how do we go back and-
Even not even measured, you'd even know if you have a clue that you saw, you know?
Yeah.
So now, when you talk about personalized instruction, is that the same thing as student-centered instruction? Is that the same thing as differentiated instruction? What, so all those terms are synonymous then, right?
They are, in some regards. When we talk about innovative personalized instruction, differentiation definitely is a piece of that. In order to, that we need to be able to look and examine different pieces of information to be able to do that. So I think for us as staff, to be able to really get to know our learners and how do we do that? So I think that's a piece of that innovative personalized instruction. You know, how do we, how do we do that in school? Do we have response to RTI, response to instruction during the day, that we have opportunities for those that need to be enriched, for those that need reinforcement, and those that may need remediation or some extra support? Or is that a before or after-school opportunity that exists? Or a pull-out opportunity? What do we provide that's embedded as part of the day? And I think that's a piece of, that we're moving toward to help that happen. I think we do provide right now personalized instruction, but I do believe there's improvement that could be done.
I just have one more than that, is all right?
Okay. Tom?
Just a concern that I have, and I don't know if it goes in this, is with the systematic approach to assessment, I would hope that at some point there be, there's an assessment of the assessment. That there's an accountability for any system that's created. And it would seem to me that there are three questions that need to be answered in the affirmative to say that this assessment is working as, at least I would hope it would work. One, that it's economical, that it's, because you see assessment systems that just overload teachers with reporting.
Right.
I mean, that's a kind of chronic problem so that the system doesn't overload teachers. And there's a survey of teachers to see, is this, is this taking too much of your time so it's not beneficial? The second one is that it's informative, that it gives you information that you couldn't get otherwise. You know, I mean, if the STAR assessment just kind of confirms things you already know, it's not doing its job, I don't think. And the third is that it's non-restrictive, so that the assessment tail doesn't wag the instructional dog, so that we don't have teachers coming in and saying, gee, I'd like to do this poetry unit, but it doesn't fit the assessment system. Or, you know, the reporting system makes it hard for me to do something that as a professional in this field, I feel that I need to do.
Right.
And it seemed to me that if those three things are anchors for assessment of the assessment system, then teachers can be assured that it's not going to kind of corrode or interfere with their work in a way that really frankly, a lot of assessment systems have done. So I mean, I would, you know, whether that goes into the goals here, I hope that that becomes an anchor and there's like kind of interaction with teachers so you can get a sense of, is it, is it meeting those three criteria? There may be others, but those would be three, I would think, that would need to be in there somehow.
Right. I think you're, we're also talking about what we mean by just a systematic approach. That means just monitoring. You know, do we implement things and then no matter what it is, whether it's an assessment or a strategic plan, or whether we're implementing standards or different pieces of curriculum and going back to monitor whether it's working. Recently, we, STAR is new, it's really, STAR isn't an assessment in and of itself, it's a type of assessment, it's a benchmark assessment. And the feedback we've gotten at the technology mentor meeting, we asked them to share a challenge and a success. The majority of people who shared it said that the STAR, while initially some anxiety was around it, that it was timely, it's $3.49 per student, and that they felt that it really helped them with their parent-teacher conferences at the elementary level when they were making recommendations because it was three-pronged now. It was their observation, what they were seeing in their working class, and now a piece, another piece of information they were able to offer. I agree with you. I think we also need to define assessment. We think of systematic approach to assessment, I see that as all different types of assessment, not just summative or just a benchmark assessment. But how are we looking at different types of assessing that we doing, what we're doing, whether it's an exit slip or it's a formative piece in the classroom, or it's a benchmark assessment called STAR, or it's kneecap or smarter balance? Do we use the different types of assessment and look at the information and make some, make some decisions? And I think to, you know, I think in the past, inadvertently, we may have just been using, either dismissing it altogether and saying, we're not going to gain any information at all from it, so let's not look at it at all. But there is value in looking at multiple forms of information. And we don't even have to call it assessment, we could just call it information. And we are trying to look at the least restrictive way to get information that we otherwise wouldn't have. I mean, one of the middle school teachers at our academic meeting had said, you know, being new, there's still, we say we're still in research and development. This is not a, we're trying it on. It's not because it's implemented, it's here to stay forever, just like the calendar. Calendar's new. If this doesn't work out and it's not meeting our needs, full-day professional development, we'll alter it, we'll change it. I don't know what past practice has been as far as when things get implemented, but I know for the approach that we're taking in this administration, that we examine things that we implement, and we're constantly asking for feedback. So I think when we, when we look at this idea of assessment, you know, I, we're looking at, like we just released our science scores, our kneecap scores just came out. We could easily dismiss it, but there is information to be gleaned and to have discussion and start dialogue around it. To not have any dialogue about that at all, it is a piece of information. So I agree, it shouldn't be the be-all, end-all. It shouldn't take over and interfere with things that we want to do or curriculum units that we'd like to implement. But I do believe it's information we should use to help inform our decisions as a piece of information. So that's important, I think.
Megan?
I just want to step back for a second. What is the goal for us this evening?
Tonight?
Yeah, I mean, are we, because, I mean, I could say, well, you should have put this in here and, you know, live ethically, I mean, we could talk about that, you know, forever.
We've talked about it, we've talked about it a lot in our committee.
I mean, I know a lot of time and energy has gone into this, a lot of people in the community, like you said, stepped forth and we have to be respectful of that. But I want to know, what are we trying to do here? And are we, are going to vote and accept these? Are we going to give some feedback to you to go back to your group?
What I'm hoping, what I'm hoping, since, you know, this, the strategic plan is a first-time effort for the district, that the board would honor the work of all the people they've asked to work for them and accept the broad goals as written. We are certainly interested in the conversation of the board. I think Tom's point about assessment is a good one to be thinking about, other issues that you've raised or Anne's raised, who've talked about the goals. I think these are all legitimate concerns. But, you know, you vested in me to go out and get a large, broad section of the community together to get to this point. I think that what we're doing is, tonight is validating that effort. And so I would hope that we don't get into wordsmithing and that we say, we had over 100 people start this process, we had over 100 people end this process, and we had three subcommittees of at least 50 people total working through this for over a year, that the board would allow this to go forward as written because it's been wordsmithed to death by the subcommittees. And it would be, I think, unfortunate if the board says, okay, well, we like this kind of, and they start, and as a body, you start changing it around because I think you'll have a hard time getting people to work for you again. I think that's really the truth. You know, you ask people to work for you and then you take their work and you reshuffle it. I don't think that's a very politically astute thing to do when you've had so many really bright people working for you to get to this stage.
I think one of the things we discussed as well is, you know, if these goals are adopted, one of the pieces that we have an obligation to do is to update and report on- on
Absolutely.
what progress is being made, and what are some of the strategies and action steps that go along with these goals, so you can see.
Who is we? You guys, the leadership team?
The district and the school, and the buildings.
Not the working group. The working group will dissolve.
Right. So it'd then be the district and the building levels.
Well, we did commit to them, like we do with ABC, to report periodically to them on the progress, and to do an annual report to this body in terms of progress, so that we can always go back to these, and then we can test against what we have done for action strategies to make this happen. And so this conversation tonight isn't wasted conversation, it's important, an important part of this process.
I have a follow-up.
One more.
One more. I just, I just, okay. I see, we just had another discussion earlier this evening, and Dr. Morris made a very clear statement about what our job, our goal is, and it's the district, to help children reach their full potential. I don't see this in here. I mean, that's a big deal, you know? And it's very simple, you know, allowing a child to be challenged. I mean, you have academic, but that's all in the context of personal excellence. Sometimes you don't know what your limits are, you don't, and as educators, we need your help to challenge us to that point. I don't know. I'm concerned, I don't see that in here. But I do respect the work, and I support it. Just a little concerned that that's missing.
Well, I do think it's incorporated in the idea of personal excellence.
Okay.
And I think the word before it, that inspires, is the goal of the school, that that's the job of the school, is to bring that into play.
You could still reach your full potential without being inspired theoretically.
Really?
Yeah. You ever learn Chinese?
I'm going to support these goals. I'm just a little disappointed that there isn't the goal regarding staff, that we want the best, and that will nurture them, and help them achieve their personal best in their, in their field.
Well, I think we capture that in the narrative, Maria. On the first page, on the other side of that, of the goals, we speak to committed, dynamic, and stimulating faculty members who continuously reflect on their instruction and assessment, to implement the best instructional practices for our students, and reach out and partner with each other and the community on behalf of advancing student learning. While it's not specific, we're not getting into the specifics of the goals, this kind of leads into the overall thinking, as we went, and a piece of having that committed staff and faculty are a part of getting toward these goals. So in the narrative piece, and some of the philosophy, and the vision that was adopted, there is more articulation around the high-quality staff.
To Maria's point, in the paragraph that you just referenced, yeah, one of my two comments. I realize Dr. Morris has said we're not going to wordsmith, but the second word, if it were value instead of have, because again, this is, this is not talking about what we have, this is talking about what we aspire to be. And so, you're going from one tense to another tense, and it's, we value having committed, dynamic, stimulating staff. That's why we have that.
Absolutely.
But I, so I'd be concerned about the use of the word have. On the other page, could you elaborate, please, on what our common set of learner expectations are?
Part of that would be the state-adopted standards, but also, as a staff, what we, in addition to the state-adopted standards, the additional standards we create here at Oyster River.
And when do we, where can I find those?
Actually, the standards that we have, there are, we know about the Common Core, but the Common Core, New Hampshire has a framework of standards. We have Common Core math, Common Core English Language Arts, we have science, New Hampshire science, we have the arts, we have technology standards, we have social studies standards that are New Hampshire, that all make up the standards that have all been adopted in New Hampshire. Those are the standards that we use to guide us, but those are the academic pieces. But then, I think we need, and I had a conversation earlier that made me realize, that there is some confusion around standards and curriculum. So while there's standards, which are more kind of criteria or goals, end-of-year goals, and then the teachers still decide what their curriculum will be to meet those goals or standards, and how they're going to get there. I think there's been some misconception that standards and curriculum are one in the same, that by adopting standards, we're stomping out the creativity of teachers, and they're not able to have the kind of professional input into how to best meet the needs, and how to best meet those standards, and learning opportunities for students. So I think we have to kind of draw that line, that we have standards that guide teachers, but that the teachers create curriculum, and how to best get those students that they teach toward those end goals. What students will know and be able to do by the end of that grade. We're not telling them that they have to do pumpkins, or they have to do this, and they have to do, or they have to be lockstep into the same page, at the same, that discussion isn't even part of what we talk about. But we talk about examining the curriculum they choose, and then determining if that's the best way to get students toward meeting that end goal. So that regardless of, if you're a second grader, and regardless of what teacher you have, we hope that you have something in common. Those goals are in common, regardless of how you approach it. And that, I think, needs to be clarified, because I think there's some miscommunication around that, and the, between what's curriculum and what are standards. So I think that's a piece that we need to be careful of, that we're not talking about adopt, by adopting standards, we're changing the curriculum. Al?
I'm not going to belabor this particularly in light of the significance of the event that's occurring this evening, so. Anyway, I kind of wanted to go back to what Tom had said, and that is, I think it's really, as you look strategically, moving forward for the next five years, particularly in the light of what's happened in the past five years, it's really imperative that, if you can look at an assessment system, teachers have to have a buy-in.
That's right.
And something that you said struck me. It's like, if you ever reach the point in assessment where you're saying, wow, should we use this or not use this, clearly you shouldn't. It wasn't useful in the first place. I mean, it has to be, when you're using it, it has to be useful, and it has to really drive that somehow that assessment you have is directing some kind of change in your classroom.
Right. And the big kicker for that, Al, is you can give an assessment, but if you never do anything with the information, why give it?
What's the point? Yeah, yeah, totally.
Right? So that has to do with any
Which is what we just came from.
Right. That has to do with any kind of assessment. And that is what we're focusing on now. You've only gone halfway, if you will, not even a part of the halfway, if you've given an assessment.
But I mean, I'm saying, we have this kind of hill that we have to kind of climb now, because we've just made people use an assessment tool that really was essentially, I guess I'm on TV, so I'll be very diplomatic about this, but wasn't particularly useful. So, you know, it's really an onus on us to make sure that if we're going to get teachers to buy into it, we have to have something that
Which assessment are you referring, Al?
Well, you know, the KCAP, really, in essence, you know, as we moved out of it, I mean, it was, no, no.
I'm like, maybe more specific.
It really, I mean, you look at that, and a lot of money was spent on that, a lot of time was spent on that.
Right.
But not a lot was really gained from that experience.
Well, you can. I mean, right, year to year, you're really not going to gain anything. We get it at the end of January. At that point, kids are halfway through the next year, they're taking it for the year before, second, you know, month into the next year. Right.
Yeah.
But we could look at three years of trend data. Three years of data implies instructional change.
But we didn't.
Or room to improve. Right. So you could, again, so you give an assessment, you can deem it, you know, unreliable, invalid, no useful information at all, or you could say, you know what, our kids spend quite a bit of time on this, we can't do anything about it, but they take it every year. Could we look at three years of information, and look to see where our kids always do well, year after year, regardless of group of kids? And could we look at that assessment to see the areas that our kids always struggle, and have some dialogue around, how come?
Right.
That's valuable. But you're right, the year-to-year, the timeliness of it, you're in a one-year look, not really, no.
Just, if I just add, I would add, Al, to what you just alluded to, under Carolyn, they spent the summer looking at trend data from the KCAP, and were able to discern strengths and areas to improve. It hasn't been the habit of the district to pay much attention to KCAP. Carolyn brought in a meaningful exercise to our math department to do that very thing, and the math teachers were totally bought into that analysis. So it's a good example of trying to get, you know, something fruitful out of something that we are all forced to do.
And you got, I mean, for it to be successful, again, I hate to be cynical, but as you see, like, the, you know, cycles of change kind of roll through an education, it's really imperative that you have something that is
Absolutely.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Absolutely. I agree.
Thank you.
I agree.
Knowing the importance of the evening, should we move on?
So, I'm sorry, I just wanted to say one more thing. I mean, the Yankees aren't in it, so we can go on all night here. No, but seriously, I think the point, well-taken about teachers, and the buy-in from teachers with assessment, and it's meaningful, and I think we can't forget about students, and the student buy-in to testing, because I think a lot of students looked at KCAPs as meaningless as well, and no effort was applied as children got older. I think we need to make sure the testing stays relevant for the student taking it, that they see that they are learning more from that testing, that it is impacting how they move forward. So I think that's a big piece.
I can sort of attest to that. I'm not going to necessarily speak from my own personal experience, but I know that a lot of my friends and other people that have been taking the KCAP tests just this past week or two, might not have been taking it as seriously as they could have. So I think it's definitely important.
So I'm going to invite Sue Caswell on that note, to the podium. I'm going to ask her to do the same format that Carolyn did, but before she does that, I also want to give credit where credit is due. Sue had a group of incredible writers on her team, and debaters, and just, they really just had a rich conversation. Material in your packet alludes to how rich their conversations were. Dean is in the audience, Lisa's, I believe, in the audience, no, she was at another meeting. But, you know, she had a group of people who couldn't put the pen down, and they really wrote great pieces, and in particular, not because Dean is in the room, but just because I've already told him this outside of the room, the piece that was written around financial prudence is really phenomenal, and really well-done. So it is in their packet, and I have to say that, because Dean made a point in a public meeting, to make sure you guys saw it, so I'm making sure he knows you have. And in that light, so incredible conversations in Carolyn's group, incredible conversation and writing in Sue's group. And so, Sue, would you give us the summary of the finance and operations?
Sure. And in your packet, you didn't have the position paper, so I did put that on your desk there. So I'll just read that quickly. There's broad community support for schools in Oyster River. This support has led to high achievement for our students. These results come at a higher-than-average price, and the majority of the financial burden for funding the schools, school system falls on local property owners. The finance and operations section of the strategic plan presents strategies to be prudent in our efforts to support the operation of schools. This section of the strategic plan should translate educational goals into financial and logistical realities to ensure transparent and effective financial management, which will bring credibility to the process, which in turn fosters confidence and collaboration among the broader community. The numbers must always follow the educational goals. The overarching goal for operations and finance is to ensure that facilities and operations will support educational goals through a sustainable education system. This committee reviewed the research done in April 2010 during the last strategic planning process, as well as the information gathered at the 2013 Future Search Event. Committee members worked hard on updating the data from April, the April 2010 process, and included information on areas that were absent from the previous reports. The committee also examined our current status to see how well we support our vision by performing a SWOT analysis. The results of this analysis allowed the committee to focus on creating goals and statements to support the finance and operations section of the strategic plan. The goals for operations and finance address the education, health, and safety of our students. These goals will be the foundation for all departments of the district to use to develop a long, and long and short-term goals to support the overarching goals. Each department of the district will support these goals, in addition to maintaining and increasing sustainability throughout the district. So, as Dr. Morris mentioned, I have more than just a blueprint for my next step, and I appreciate all the hard work from all the committee members. Again, we'll work, I'll work with the directors on specific long- and short-term goals around that information. Our three goals, goal number one, the education, health, and safety of our children are our top priorities. Decisions made regarding transportation, food service, technology, and facilities shall support this priority. Goal number two, Oyster River schools will maintain and increase sustainability through food, gardens, transportation, and energy, and incorporate those into the curriculum. Goal number three, financial prudence should guide all decisions to be among the best-performing schools in New Hampshire. Questions? Anne?
This is awesome, thank you. I read through your whole report, and I have, may I make comments on the whole report, or do I just make comments on these two pages?
Oh, I think that you can do what you want, Anne, you're a board member.
I always do.
Don't let us stop you.
Yeah, you always. Don't worry, I haven't missed any of the scores on Al's computer. On number two, I would like, or I think that members of our paying community would appreciate if number two were modified to include, as long as the tax rate will not be adversely affected.
So I would, I would react to that, saying that the tax rate is a combination of school district, county, and town, and so we don't control the tax rate, we only control one piece of it, sizable piece of it. I give you that, but it's not something within our control.
Our job is to educate kids. We are bound by law to educate children, and these other elements of our operations are all, many of them, become large or small based on our choices. And the cost of them become large or small based on our choices. And my point is that I think we have to remain constantly vigilant about who's paying for it when it comes to these things that are not directly related to academics. And that a goal should be to always keep that in mind. Now, I appreciate, number three says that we are financially prudent. Well, I'm sorry, being prudent is not the same thing as being accountable. And so, number two, I think all those things are important. I'm not putting a value statement on it, but I think we must always remain vigilant to what the cost is to the taxpayer, and to the folks out there who don't get these things because they can't afford them. So, to continue through the report, because I will do what I want to do, it's an extraordinary report. It makes reference to a lot of our operations. I'm concerned about how we have changed our busing pickups, and while I appreciate the consolidated stops, I'm hoping we take a very close look at the seasonal appropriateness of some of our consolidations. As the lightness in our community goes dark, and children are walking greater distances in darkness to either get to a bus, or halt in a bus, or the road is covered with ice, I think that some of those consolidations maybe need to be thought out. Still on the same page, makes a reference to mentoring new staff. That's awesome, we've done that before. I'm certain a K2, D5 model would facilitate that. Talked about parking, parking at the high school for students. I hope we always maintain the philosophy that parking is a privilege. Freedom from environmental hazards. I realize, Carolyn can probably speak to this, that there is no science curriculum to date. So we talk about classes that we want to potentially increase or add, like an environmental health risks class, because there is no science curriculum, per se. You're free to do that, but I certainly hope that it keeps in alignment with what our goal is in our science program, not simply because it's here. School security. I was told by someone yesterday that they came to the building and couldn't get in, and I said, well, of course you can't get in, there's a buzz-in system. Well, apparently, according to this person, there is not good signage that tells them how to buzz in. So I'd like us to verify that there's adequate signage so we can buzz in. The person might have been blind, I don't know. Do we have braille? I don't know. The playground feels an outdoor safety. There apparently is a, I guess my question is, at what point during the year do we assess our playgrounds, and has that recently happened? our playgrounds, and has that recently happened? Because according to this, Peerless does it yearly.
Our custodians do it every year.
Every month. Every month.
Every month. This is a hot topic. Was the new, was the plan for the Maharamet playground approved, or did Peerless review it before it was built?
Yes.
No, Brian was part of the approval process.
But Peerless was also part of that process, too.
Okay. I'm curious, in terms of the programs to deter bullying, and I'm not sure who can answer this question, but where does the bullying take place?
Well, bullying can take place anyplace.
Predominantly.
Well, I don't necessarily think it's a huge issue for us, but, I mean, I would have to, I mean, it's such, it's an important issue to us, but the number of incidences is so small that I'm not sure I could give you a pattern of where.
Is it lunch in recess?
Usually at the elementary school, it would be when kids are free at recess time. But again, it's not a huge issue for us.
It is a huge issue if one, to one child, that's being bullied.
Yeah, I understand that, but that, that wasn't what we're responding to, not the number of incidences. If you are the child being bullied, it's important to you. I get that. But to have a pattern, I guess you'd have to have numbers. I guess I was responding to numbers.
I'm just wondering if, if a natural deterrent to, to that bullying is having a person of authority present. And if a person of authority is present, does less bullying occur?
I don't know if there's any data one way or the other on that, Anne. I know that having an SRO at the, at the high school certainly helps in terms of discipline, but I don't.
Young kids of authority might be their teacher.
Yeah, exactly.
Someone that they see as an authority figure, versus someone they don't perceive as an authority figure. Okay, let me see if I can get this through the next inning now.
Could be the next long week.
I might, I might. Let's hear it till tomorrow. And I'm a little, as, as Tom was a little concerned about the word excellence, I'm a little concerned about the word sustainable, just from what does it mean in the opening goal? What does sustainable mean? It can be meaning lots of things to lots of people, and if it's a goal, perhaps we should be a bit more specific.
I think the word sustainable there might answer the first point that you were making about the cost in number two. To me, and from the discussion I heard at our bigger meeting, sustainable means a system that is able to keep going and going and going, which includes being able to be funded by the taxpayer. So I think that's what the definition there implies, and I think that that is why number two doesn't need to have more language. It's under that umbrella.
In your discussion in the small group, sustainable was about budget sustainability, or was it about environmental sustainability?
Both. Both. We went back and forth on whether or not we should actually put that in there, but we took it out at the end, because we figured it would be understood, but apparently not.
Hold on.
I don't know, Al. Where are we?
I don't know.
Take a break and come back.
So, you know, fortunately I'm able to multitask through this process, but what I wanted to answer, actually, was Anne's first thing about financial prudence, because that's come up before. And I really like in Dean's paper, it just sums up so much better to saying, spending your money wisely. And in, if you read his paper, really, it does tie our spending to accountability in many ways. Similarly to Carolyn's academic thing, we're tying our spending to, you know, how, you know, how can we measure that we're really using our money effectively? And I really like that the way that was put, because, I mean, an example is like this cafeteria. You have money coming in now, this rainy day. I mean, we could pass it on as tax savings and kick the can of fixing what's a significant educational problem away, but instead, we're using this opportunity to, to fix something that'll have a long-term impact that is only going to escalate in cost later down the lines.
And another example that goes along those lines, Al, is the Siemens work that the board authorized.
Yeah, perfect.
I mean, that was an upfront cost that's paid by reduced utility costs, and clearly, you know, the work that was done by Siemens, the board gave you your payback and, and a monitoring system so that we would know whether that was a good investment.
Or like leasing the computers, the networking equipment, that we can get it in place so that it's in time for smarter balance. I mean, there's been just, you know, example after example of, of example of like how we're using our money wisely to implement programs that'll only get more expensive down the road and are meeting a very specific academic need.
And then the health and safety. I'm disappointed that drug and alcohol abuse prevention isn't mentioned in spite of what Jay has to say about the survey, and I'm happy to hear it. I hear that drugs are readily available here at the high school, and that's a huge issue for me. The other one that's not mentioned is hunger. We do have children that depend on breakfast and lunch at school, but go home weekends to less than nourishing meals. So I'd just like to see both of those issues mentioned.
I can't find it now, but I think I did see something about hunger here.
Well, I think dyslexic, I read this a little.
I remember it in our discussion. I do remember it in our discussion.
She is incredibly thorough.
Lisa did, at least Allison.
I think it was in recognition of that, and talked about how without nutrition, there isn't learning, and so I think that is there.
So I appreciate everything you just said, Maria, except I do want, I don't want the, the hanging Chad, so to speak, that you hear that there's drugs readily available at the high school. We have law enforcement at the high school, and I would, you, any high school is a microcosm of the community that it's in. We don't have any evidence in terms of disciplinary issues, arrests, or any other documented data that would indicate that drugs are readily available at the high school. I just, I would get concerned when we say things like that and there's no documentation to support it. That's just, I couldn't let that hang.
Unfortunately, it's part of our society.
Exactly.
And we need to work on it.
We need to be ever vigilant on that issue. I agree with that.
To keep it quiet and not mention it does it a disservice.
Yeah, I would agree with that, but just in the year that I've been superintendent, we've had two major presentations on it, and Jay just offered another one. So I don't think that we have been keeping it quiet. And I don't mean to get into debate with the chair. I just, the way that was praised.
I'll debate this at length. I don't usually share my personal situations, but as a mother who dropped her 16-year-old daughter off at the door of rehab and never had to move back home, this is a big issue. And if it takes 100 kids or just my kid, it's something that we all have to keep front and center.
Maria?
Yes?
I gather from what you're saying that you wish, you would have liked to have seen a goal here that our district be drug-free and/or that children have avenues of, of...
In the background here, what we see is our health and wellness things that I would like to, another.
We can reinforce that in the position paper. No question.
I'm sorry, may I finish, please? I agree with you, and what I would like, would hope that we could have as a goal is that you give options of intervention options to people when they're young enough that they take them before they get too deep.
Right.
So, you know, I don't, I think this is a discussion that needs greater exploration and conversation.
I would offer the board that nothing stops us from adding a goal. I mean, if we see something that's, there's a truck we can drive through, we can certainly add a goal, and you can give that mission to Sue and I, and we'll come back with an additional goal.
And if you are correct that we don't have much here, that's great, but the prevention piece, we're not into.
I'm not, I'm not acuing that at all. I agree with you.
The hunger thing is there, and I could show it to you later.
Okay.
There was once, jumping into this conversation, I, I, before I was on the board, and when there was the past presentation of the children at risk, I mean, it was clear there was drug use, there was alcohol use. It did not seem to be out of proportion to other schools in the state, and certainly not out of proportion to other schools in the country. That doesn't mean it's acceptable, but what I felt at the time was, one, there's, to say we want a school without drugs doesn't make your school have no drugs. And my approach, and it's an approach I have in practice, too, is that if the mental wellness, the, the well-being of a student is there, the risk of drug abuse and alcohol abuse is much less. And so coming onto the board, my motivation for joining the Wellness Committee was to focus on that mental health piece, because I think that that is the only way that's been shown to take care of drug and alcohol problem. So I'm not, I'm not saying that it's not an issue, but I don't think it's an issue that we make a statement that that takes care of it. I think there's a lot of groundwork that needs to be done.
Definitely.
That is, alcohol and drug abuse is the endpoint. It's the symptom of the disease that started earlier, and that's not having that emotional health piece. What I wanted to say, but I had my hand up for, and it was pointed out before, and it's that line where we recommend to focus on the potential of our new hires and leveraging our current staff's experience by having them mentor new staff. I think that's really wonderful. I think it's actually something that should be happening now on the academic piece. One thing that I really wanted was to have room for collaboration. I think that's how faculty grow. I don't think our teachers have time now to be spending mentoring other teachers. It's something I would love to see built in, a system where teachers get to observe others, be observed by teachers, and have that peer-to-peer review. I think that's a way to have our faculty grow at all levels. Better teachers become even better. Teachers that might be underperforming bring up as well.
I just have a question, because we could get into specifics forever tonight, I think. I mean, it seems to me that the general goal, there could be specifics, you know, because I don't think this is the final shape it's going to take. You're going to have elaboration of each of these points, and so I think, I wonder whether we could approve these general goals and then offer suggestions for the elaboration of them, but not try to do that all tonight.
And that's what I've been doing in terms of, that my mindset, Tom, has just been writing down these thoughts from the board, so that when we build the action strategies, we can build them through these broad goals.
I wonder whether we could go forward to the communication and then, you know, then approve these as general goals unless there's something radically that couldn't even be covered under these, and then, then take, not try, because I think we could, we could...
They're going to come back. I mean, I...
We could spend absolutely forever.
They're going, I mean, I think that the administration, you guys, once you have these broad goals and you're building out exactly as Jim's going to say, it's not like we'll never see you again. You're going to go back with more specificity, so, you know, Tom's right.
Can we move forward, could we move forward to the communication goals?
Sure. So the communication, I was blessed in communication. Dean was, no, I actually had a great committee, and of course, the, one of the other frustrations of the chair and Al is our inability to sort of systematically communicate with our community. And part of our handicap, of course, is we don't have our own newspaper. But what has evolved is something very akin to a newspaper, and although it never, was never intended to be, which is the Durham Friday Update has become kind of the reed of the cooperative. I mean, city manager Todd Selig reached out even to the Lee principal last week and said, we'd love to have pieces in the Friday Update that represent the Mastway community, as he was hearing the conversation about cooperation between Mastway and Maharamet. So I thought that was pretty incredible. And then, most recently, the town of Madbury has established the, the beginning of an email communication system within, within the town. So, you know, the, the position paper, I think because of the, the hour, I won't read the position paper, which means I'll get beat up by Sue and Carolyn tomorrow because I had to read theirs, but I'm getting sensitive to time. But I do want, I do want to read the last paragraph, because the last paragraph really says it, and Carolyn thinks this should be the first paragraph, and we have this debate all the time. Those responsible for communicating must be mindful that isn't an exhaustive exercise, and there will always be someone who did not get the message, and yet every effort must be made to constantly communicate. And then the final quote that Carolyn really believes should be the first quote is, as George Bernard Shaw stated, "The single biggest problem with communication is the illusion that it has taken place." So having said that, I just would go to the goals. We have three goals. The overarching goal is to enhance communications, to accurately report district performance, to engender a culture of trust, respect, and support. And you'd say, well, jeez, that's kind of common sense. But I would tell you that the committee spent a lot of time, and actually, Maria was the person who said, we're missing the piece about why we're doing this, which is to accurately report district progress. It's not to engender a culture of trust, respect, and support independently. It's because of the work we're doing and the work we're communicating with parents and the non-parent community. Remember that 80% of our community do, do not have children in our schools, and they're just as interested in what's happening in the arts or the sports programs or the academic achievements, the recognitions that the high school has received, and so forth. So part of our work is to build a systematic approach of communicating, recognizing that in the end, there'll be somebody who'll go to that podium, just as they did tonight, and said, I never got the message. And so that's always, that's always the danger, but as long as the Communications Committee and this, and myself and this, and the administrative staff are attempting, then we can say, well, this is what we did, and what do we need to do better? The internal goal is to communicate with the school community. That's, that seems like a logical one. It's usually the only mechanism that historically happens in public schools. It's me talking to Todd, Todd talking to his staff. That's the end of the, the chain. We, so we felt the external goal was, in our system, was just as important, that we communicate and engage the member communities of Durham, Lee, and Madbury in a consistent and ongoing manner. Recently, Maria attended a public meeting at the Select Board in Lee. Kenny joined me in a presentation to the council in Durham. We are open to going out into public forums. We communicate, we are attempting to communicate through the technology that's available to us, but what we do know is we can send out, as we did last week, two communications that went out 8,000 times to, because of multiple phones, and we sent it through the email network, and there still will be people, truly, who, they're not giving us a hard time, who didn't get the email, didn't get the voicemail, you know, they happen to be out of town when their neighbors were talking about it and so forth. And so we have to always be respectful of that. I mean, the, the issue for us is, no matter how hard we try, we still have to try harder when it comes to communication, and not get frustrated when people say, I didn't get the message. I think you were all present, well, it was Lee, the gentleman who came to the microphone said, I didn't know anything about the tuitioning piece. And very courteously, I said, well, we sent out 4,500 postcards to every homeowner in the district to make them aware of the meeting, and his wife said, did it come in April? And I said, yeah, and she said, we weren't in town. So it's, that's just the kind of thing that happens, and when we send out those postcards to the homeowners, we're not hitting the renters, because there's no mechanism for us to even do that. So these are, seem like simple goals, but Al and Maria would tell you during our communications plan, they're always saying, have you done this? Have you done this? What about this? You know, the idea of putting the poster boards in, in the public places, new idea. I stole it from Madbury. You know, I stole it from Todd in Durham. He's been doing that with his town office. So look for mechanisms that seem to work, high-traffic areas, use whatever tool we have at our disposal. Al wants to talk.
Just a short one. It's a, because actually, her coming to the podium, I think, show, I mean, she, she came to the podium, it was a great... Actually, her coming to the podium, I think, I mean, she came to the podium, it was great she came, saying she hadn't heard about it, but the great point is that she had an opportunity to hear about it, and not just that she heard about it, but we gave her enough time to respond to it and have input in it before we made a decision. And I think that's really a critical part of our communication package, not that, you know, two minutes ago, I say, "All right, we're going to make this huge decision," but we give you guys enough time to process what we're doing, to have input into it, and so that everyone is thoroughly heard. Because I think a lot of our problems that we had in the past was that people felt like they didn't get a chance to really, to let their voice heard and really have a, you know, a say in what the decision was. So I think that this has been a really good setup, the way you're putting it together.
Go.
So I would just ask one more time, if the board is willing to adopt these broad goals. We've taken notes in relation to the interests of board members, and you'd see these materialize through action strategies.
I'd like to make a...
Ken.
Sorry.
I'd like to make a motion for the board to adopt the broad goals in the three areas that have been outlined to us tonight.
Al.
I'll second it.
Move, by Kenny. Second, by Al. Discussion. Hearing none. Seven in the affirmative, Peter in the affirmative. Motion carries.
And I would thank you for the over 100 citizens who got us to this point in the community. It's a great dedication by a lot of wonderful people.
Considering the hour, do we want to skip the school board committee updates for tonight?
Sounds good to me.
A public comment. I'll give you a minute.
I'm Dean Revine from Lee. I'll be very best. Thanks for all the kind words about my section. I just wanted to make sure that all the whole committee got credit, because they all had input, and especially Wayne Burton supplied a fair amount of language. And I think we started from Lisa Allison and Jenna Roberts, original.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
Anybody else?
I don't know if I would count as the public right now, but I would just like to, as the high school principals say, I too am concerned about drugs and alcohol in our, in our school, in our school community, but it is an issue that's much greater than the high school itself. And I would caution the chair to make sweeping statements such as, "We have rampant drug issues in the school."
I said, "I've heard that."
Well, with all due respect, with all due respect, sweeping generalizations like that are not helpful in dealing with this issue. Thank you.
Hi, I'm David Eddy from Madbury. Actually, the sister graduated two years ago from Oyster River, and would actually say that compared to her colleagues in college now, she didn't find it to be a huge drug problem at Oyster River. So I would concur with that. I just wanted to say that I know a lot of parents and families were talking today about the fact that their sons or daughters may be impacted by a change of redistricting with bus lines. And I understand and I appreciate that. And I feel for them, because I think all of us, I know all of you, would rather that no families had to be impacted because of the change and because of the fact you have this difference of enrollments in the two schools. But I think that one of the things to consider is that in doing that with two students, or 40, or 60, or whatever the numbers are, you're talking about impacting that number of students versus moving 700 and some odd around by changing the complete K to four model to a K to two and two to four. And I think, given the fact that you're hearing as much as you are from the teachers in both, from both schools and what their feelings are, and the fact of the educational benefits of K to four, and I particularly, personally, I have three students that are in the school system, two of whom are complete polar opposites of where they are educationally. I can tell you that one probably needs a little bit more help and a little more time, and the other was kind of at the other end of the spectrum. And I just worry a little bit about the K to two and two to four model for that very reason, that are, how are those students going to be impacted that are kind of needing a little bit more help? And how are the students that are on the other end of the spectrum, how are they best going to be served? Thanks.
Important piece of data, the Red Sox are ahead five to nothing.
Thank you, Dennis.
And we thought he was listening to the school board meeting.
With that, we have future meeting dates that are all listed right there.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Point of information, our regular board meetings, our business meetings that are held in public, they are not public forums. And so, for the community that's listening, as edification, our, for instance, our meeting last week was not a public forum. It was a regular business meeting held in public. And the rules of those meetings are printed in the back of our agenda, and additional information is available in our operational policy.
Thank you.
I just have a question, and this may be something that the agenda committee will have to look at, but whether the beating on the 20th is just going to become overloaded. You know, how many things we're going to have to have on that that are very substantial? And so, I think we might, I don't know whether that necessitates another meeting or whether, what that does to the meeting schedule, but I think we really have to look at that.
Actually, Sue and I had that same conversation in terms of the budget.
I'm worried. I could probably do the tuition thing at the same time.
Dr. Morris, I'd like to make a recommendation that our regular meetings be held in this room. And if we're having a forum, we could have a forum in the auditorium, but regular meetings should be conducted in this room. So the perception is, it's a regular meeting or it's a forum, and we no longer unintentionally mislead the public in thinking that it's a forum.
I appreciate that, Ann. It was my recommendation to the chair to move it to the auditorium, because I knew it would be an incredibly packed meeting. And I think that to have a meeting in this room, predicting that kind of attendance really exasperates the public's potential for putting in their public comment. I think we can look at the forum, the room we're using, and say, "This is a business meeting, not a forum," and make that clear. But I would, I would still recommend that we use a larger room when we anticipate large volumes of people, because there's no place for people to sit out inside the hall enough room in order to see the TV and then trying to get to a podium. I just, that's, I think, I mean, obviously, the board has control over that, but that was my recommendation because of that, to try to be respectful of the public.
Well, in respect that's due to our chair, it needs to be understood by the public that it is the purview of the chair to limit public comment.
Right.
If she or he, if it were a male chair, perceives we can't get the work of the board done, and I'm afraid the public doesn't understand, again, this is a business meeting, a meeting of the board held in public.
Right.
And that is our job, to get that work done. We meet twice a month to run a pretty big show with a great leader, but if we spend an evening listening to folks as if it were a forum, you have held forums. You will hold more of them if you think they're necessary. Public voices is incredibly important, but we can't function without us doing the work of the board, which we do at our regular schedule meetings.
And I greatly appreciate that, Ann, and I hope that that can be accommodated by reading the Rules of the Road when we open a meeting in a larger forum, you know, to reiterate that it is a business meeting. You're absolutely right.
Al.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I want to discuss that.
Without discussion. We're adjourned.